So at 6:12 PM on June 15th, I will call the meeting of the Lancaster City Planning Commission to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the meeting of June 1st, 2022. Do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from June 1st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from...
Proceed.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Whalen, a second from Commissioner Dastre. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes unanimously.
And Ms. Ritchie, can I just clarify, did Mr. Bame vote on that?
Yes, I voted yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the subdivision and land development plan for 327 East Chestnut Street.
Madam Chair, this is a very simple plan. It's being recommended without any conditions. There are a few modifications, but this is a very simple subdivision plan. I'm happy to just turn it over to Mr. Gergely, who's here to present, and we can pull up those plans now. Give us just one moment. Could you hit the on button?
Steve Gergely with Harbor Engineering. Yeah, as Douglas said, this is a very simple subdivision plan. There's two dwellings on one lot, 327 East Chestnut Street. It's a semi-detached residence. And 326 East Fulton Street, which is a detached residence with a garage on the first floor. And they each have public, they each have their own addresses. They have their own utility connections to their respective streets. We're simply proposing a subdivision essentially down the center of the lot. We did go to the zoning hearing board. We got a couple of dimensional variances for reduced lot size and increased lot coverage. But there are no improvements proposed as part of this plan with the exception of replacement of the apron in front of the garage on Fulton Street to make it ADA accessible, the city standard detail for that. Other than that, it's really setting lot corners and the subdivision plan. We're asking for a few modifications. We did not, we had the property surveyed, but we didn't have a topographic survey done because there's no improvements proposed. Because we didn't do a topographic survey, there was no need to tie it down to the city's horizontal datum. And we're also asking for a modification of street trees. There's really no room on either side of the property to put street trees. There's a garage on the north side and on the south side. There's very little space. There's a number of utilities serving each lot, and there's a bump out in the front of Chestnut Street for a small porch area. So in lieu of that, our client has, and I think they dropped it off, Mendali, the fee in lieu of trees, I think is $500 per street tree. So other than that, you know, we've got some county comments. We've addressed those as well. They were very minor in nature. And I think we've worked everything out with Douglas and Mendali and staff. So we'd be looking for action on the modifications and the plan.
Mr. Gergely, are there already address points for both of these buildings?
Yes.
Okay.
Before we move on to discussion, can I have a motion on the second?
Motion to approve. And second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Dastre, a second by Commissioner Whalen. Any questions from members of the commission?
Okay. I didn't know I would have any. So actually, this first one's more directed at Douglas. Because I know that we accept funds for street trees, and I definitely am not going to try and incline you to put street trees on an impossible spot. But like, what does the city do, like, what is the long-term plan with all the funds that we get in aggregate?
Sure. So the fee in lieu of is deposited into a tree planting account that the city arborist has access to. And we plant those trees essentially in empty tree wells and on city properties as they're identified. In some cases, we've partnered with organizations to provide those trees and funding. For instance, the Lancaster Cemetery, we've done plantings with in the past. There have been some other organizations as well. So the funds are definitely put to good use. They help fund just the material costs of the tree. So they're not funding, it's not funding salary of any of our employees. So in addition to the tree itself, which ranges between $200 and $300 roughly, then there's also the stakes and the guy wires and the bags, watering bags. And there may be a couple other materials that are occasionally used.
Okay, thank you. The second one is for you, and this is, this is me being OCD, for lack of better words. I'm just looking at the other property lines adjacent to the property. And I mean, the one beside on the left doesn't have any splits. But is there any way to make that separation parallel to the other adjacent property?
So what we tried to do is split the property more or less in half. And then we went to the zoning hearing board. The onus is really to try to ask for the least modification possible. So each lot size is smaller than the required lot size for a semi-detached and a single family. But for one of the lots, we were able to meet the minimum lot, or the maximum lot coverage and building coverage, and not for the other lot. So we did it in such a way, otherwise, we would have had to ask for that modification for two lots, or that variance for two lots.
Okay, I can understand that. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of commission? Any questions from members of the public? I will now call for the vote. Commissioner Dastre?
Aye.
Commissioner Sufert?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Bohm?
Aye. Sorry, I couldn't click my button fast enough.
All right. All opposed? No opposition? The subdivision plan for 327 East Chestnut Street passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Bame, are you still there?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. It would be nice if we could make the housing subcommittee presentation that we have scheduled a part of the formal meeting this evening. Would you be willing to hang on with us for another 10 minutes or so, 15 minutes, while we go through that presentation as a part of the meeting this evening?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So the next...
I apologize if I can't click my button fast enough again. I am here.
So the next item on the agenda is a presentation from Ms. Lisa Greener, the Executive Director of Community Basics Incorporated.
I might need to hold it down for a minute.
There we go. Technology. Hi, everyone. I'm Lisa Greener. I'm the Executive Director with Community Basics. For those of you who don't know who we are, we are a nonprofit affordable housing developer and property manager located in Lancaster City. We manage over almost 500 units so far within the county. We have one property located within the city. It has 23 units. Excuse me, that one's 24 units. Got the wrong count. We develop generally throughout Lancaster County. We do look at close other areas in trying just to strictly do affordable housing. We don't do any market rate. We don't do anything commercial. Strictly affordable housing. Our mission is to create and manage high-quality affordable housing in central PA and surrounding areas. And we envision all people living in a place they're proud to call home. So you can stay on the location requirements. Back. There you go. So location requirements. As we're looking for sites, some of these are similar to what a market rate developer would look for, and other ones are more specific to what an affordable housing developer would look for. So we want to know that there's the need for affordable housing options in the area. It should be in vicinity of employment opportunities. It should be some proximity to bus routes. Many of our residents don't have enough money to own a car, so they do use public transportation. Nearby services and shopping. You need to go to the grocery store. You need to go to the drugstore. Those things need to be nearby, especially if you don't have a car. The site size. Is it large enough to get enough units on the property, but not too large that you're buying more land than you need? So it's, you know, you got to get the right, right size. Zoning. We look at zoning in that we generally do not even remotely think about looking at commercially zoned property. We generally look for the R2 that has the high-density component. We generally look for the R2 that has the high-density component to create our housing. Hey, it starts getting into the cost of the rezoning. You got the NIMBYism, that'll actually pop up again on another slide, so people are already like, I don't want that there. And it just, so we try to create as the path of least resistance. And if it's a family project, we're also looking into the education and schools in the area. And we do do adaptive reuse properties, but you need to make sure that they're appropriate for housing, that there's no extra environmental issues or anything like that that would prohibit housing. Okay, you can move on to the next one? So obstacles of a location. This is where we get into the land development process. Can you get the appropriate density on the site you're looking for? If it's, if they only want, you know, five houses per acre, that might not be enough, maybe you need seven per acre. You definitely don't want those that only want two per acre. That's going to eat up way too much farmland way too fast for our county's growth. Zoning variances. As Nicole stated earlier, you know, part of the reason we look for properties zoned more in what, with what we need is it creates less variances to have to go back and seek. The NIMBYism, the not in my backyard situation. As we know, there's a lot of people out there that have negative thoughts on stigmas that go with affordable housing. Not realizing that they look and feel just like the house that they live in. It's just a matter of the programs we use, we can offer the rents at an affordable rate. Real estate taxes and other fees. So real estate taxes are something that's ongoing and these properties do pay taxes, so we take that into consideration. Utility connection fees, water and sewer connections, there could be some other things in there that, you know, how much are they going to cost? Municipal fees, there's such things, I mean, you talked about your, the street tree. Well, there's other ones that have park fees. Those fees are way more expensive than the street tree passing so often. And then how much does the property cost? You know, it doesn't fit into the pro forma. Right now, as we're looking at values of real estate increasing, that's getting to be a scarier subject for us. So financial, don't go too fast, back up. Financial feasibility, so there's two components to the financial feasibility. The first one is the development budget, and that's the budget to actually get the project through land development and actually build the building, so you have something that you can actually rent. So you may have enough money to create the building, but do you have enough money to, or does it make enough money to operate over the long term? So you need to balance both of those as you're looking at your financial feasibility for a project. I think that's all I have on that one. So components of the development budget. There's lots of components, I tried to put them in little buckets to make them a little easier to swallow. The acquisition costs are the, to acquire the property. You have an architect that has to design the buildings. You have the construction cost to build the buildings. And there's the land development process cost. So that includes the engineer, such as Steve. As well as, a lot of times there's an attorney involved. Some of the times you pull in some other additional third-party vendors that need to do something to assist in that process. There's other reports and testing, the geotechnical, environmental appraisal, market study type of thing. The utility and municipal fees, that's the connection fees perhaps to water and sewer or any other fees associated with the municipality that you're operating in. Financing costs, things cost money. So most times you're using either a bridge loan or a construction loan, if there's an interest rate associated with that, that adds to your budget. For affordable housing, we create reserves. So we set up reserves to know that these will operate well for the next, you know, 30 years hopefully. And some of that goes into the development budget where we set up the baseline for them. The developer does get a fee to go through all of this to create the housing. So that's a component. And then there's organizational costs, in that these are separate limited partnerships. So there are some legal fees and some other things associated with setting up that legal entity. So just to give you a flavor for what a sample budget might look like, this is a roughly 50-unit apartment project. So you might spend about a thousand, a million dollars to acquire the land. You'd have about $500,000 in architectural. Your construction cost would probably be close to 12 million. You have land development for the engineering and the legal. There's third-party testing, utility and municipal fees, financing fees and interest. The reserves, the developer fee and the organizational cost. So in 50 units, it's about $16 million. Development challenges. So current environment, the construction price increases are through the roof. We have supply chain issues that are still going on. Those are new, that we're not used to seeing at the level that they are right now, which is creating gaps in, I think, just about every affordable housing project that's pending construction starts. Weather can also cause problems. The land development process, the length of time and the amount of costs associated with that time can also create challenges within doing a development. And then there's building code requirements, and as they change over time, you know, did you have all your drawings done? And it took you two or three rounds to get your award? And then the building code changes, so now the drawings need to be redone so that you can reprice, so that you can go back. Sometimes I wonder why I work so hard. So, and then I have a sample financing of the development budget. So we use low-income housing tax credits that are awarded through Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. Those credits are then sold to an investor who becomes the limited partner in the partnership. And they pay a certain amount for those credits. And that's going to generally bring you a little over $11 million. We utilize home funds from the county or the city. This particular project, I put in a million dollars there. We utilize Penn Homes, which is similar to the home funds from the county and city, it's just allocated through the state versus the local. I have 750 there. Foundations and grants, thank goodness for them, they help to fill some of the gap. So we have another million dollars there. The Affordable Housing Program, that's what AHP is. The banking industry has 12 federal home loan banks that offer an affordable housing program that has a grant. So that's another half million there. We have a permanent mortgage here of another million. And then the developer ends up putting some of their fee that they thought they earned back into the project to fill the gap. So that's roughly how we get them paid for. Notice that it's not simply one funding source, it is many. Some of our financing challenges, it's the competitive application process from the low-income housing tax credits, grants, the home funds. Every process we go through is another competition. So we have to make sure that we have projects of the right magnitude and packaging to make sure that we can get those awards. Market pricing of the low-income housing tax credit investment. The tax credits are actually part of the IRS regulations. So anytime there are changes to your federal taxes, it changes the, how an investor will look at their tax credits, which could impact how much they pay for each of, each dollar of those credits. We currently see right now in around 90 cents or so in our area. Interest rates, okay, I don't know what's going to happen with those other than going up. We got lucky there for a few years, they were nice and low and everything was working well, now it's starting to stretch. Funding gaps, all those cost increases we talked about earlier create more and more gaps. Limited resources. The various foundations and grants and tax credit, everything we get is limited. So there's only so much out there and there is so much need for affordable housing throughout the state, and everybody's fighting for the same money. The reinvested fees, so the developer can only reinvest a certain amount of those fees that they earned. They can only max at half of the fee that they earn. And sometimes they almost want to be able to put more in. And at the same time, you need to make sure that your own company is financially viable to continue to do, do your thing. The foundations and grants and the timings of those. You know, maybe you want to start construction in June and the grant application is due in May. They're not going to make an award in June, so it may delay your project. Some governmental grants also trigger prevailing wages, which will add another cost increase to the project. So you have to weigh, is it worth going for that particular grant? Is it going to increase your project more than the grant that you're getting?
I never quite understood the prevailing wage aspect of an affordable housing project because it drove the costs up. So is there anything in your world that you are doing to advocate, to move away from that? Even from like an affordability, maybe specifically for an affordability project?
So some, some of the different sources do not trigger that. And then there are others that do. So we just have to be very careful and read the language and then make that determination. If you're doing small repairs somewhere, that cost differential isn't as big. When you're talking, you know, $16 million project, yes, it grows exponentially. So yeah, I would love to understand how you're supposed to do affordable housing and then kick that in at the same, that doesn't make sense to me either. So from an operating budget, I just, I wanted to make sure I threw something in on this too. This is our project that is actually in Lancaster City Park Avenue Apartments. With the various programs that we use, our rental income is restricted. We qualify our residents based on the area median income and they have, they make 60% or less of the area median income based on their family size. And then they are qualified to receive the restricted rental income rates. With that said, just because your operating costs go up, doesn't mean you can increase the rent. The rent is what the rent is and that's it. We can't charge anything extra, we can't create fancy income. Suddenly we like run out some parking spaces or anything, that's not permitted. So you're already talking about a fixed income stream. And then you've got administrative costs, management fees, repairs and maintenance, utilities, real estate taxes, insurance, payroll expenses, reserve deposits. And I forgot to put on principal and interest payments because you have hard debt on there, so that needs to be paid as well. Let me scroll up to the next one. So challenges with the affordable housing operating budgets, I kind of went into the rental income restrictions. And we have had a couple of instances back in like 2008, 2009 where the rents actually decreased. So that doesn't help anything, because your costs never really decrease. It's the operating expenses, utility costs increase faster than the rents, insurance costs right now are increased and faster than rents. You have repair costs increases and increased labor costs. Keep in mind, we're stuck with this exact same rent we are, so, you know, we would love to give our employees more of a raise, but we can't afford to, because the projects can't afford to pay them. Let me scroll onto the next. So why do we develop affordable housing? All people should live in a place they're proud to call home. Essential workers deserve to live near their employment. Seniors and people with disabilities need accessible housing. And safe, high-quality affordable housing strengthens neighborhoods. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, please let me know.
So I do have one question. From the perspective of community basics, what, if any, current public policy poses the biggest challenge to developing affordable housing?
I think in general, it's the multitude of zoning ordinances throughout 60 municipalities within the county, it's insane. Every municipality you go to, you must clearly read all their ordinances and then make sure that your project fits in. And then at the same time, you're reading them and you're like, okay, well, this ordinance might have been done, I don't, I'm going to pick yours. Maybe it was done in 1980 and this ordinance was written in 1995. But they, they cross over and they don't work together. Because they were done in two different timelines and things changed. So I think it would be great if there could be county-wide zoning. Can you make that happen, Douglas?
I'll do my best. I've got a question for you as well. Ms. Greener, you talked about a lot of the challenges. I'm interested to hear from you where the opportunities might lie. And I'll give you a couple leads that, you know, we've been looking at in our zoning ordinance and developments. People are requesting smaller units, so curious to hear whether that is at all a boon to affordable housing if we were to allow, say, units that were under 400 square feet, which is our minimum for inefficiency. Cohousing is also another opportunity, or cooperative housing, where there's shared, like cooking, bathroom facilities. There are some successful models like that. And then if there's anything else, I mean, in terms of like location where you would want to see affordable housing, like where it could go. I don't know, any opportunities to add a glimmer of hope to, I think, some of the challenges you painted?
So the programs that we generally use, the low-income housing tax credits, there are some restrictions in there that don't fit some of those things you just mentioned. However, I do think there is definitely some good qualities to that in that perhaps then more of a market rate or lower end market rate might be able to actually make some money on those. As you're getting the smaller unit, then you create more rents at that smaller amount. So you might have the opportunity to actually make some money, which for-profit developers are generally looking to do. The shared living, there is also some challenges with those, in that you have to make sure that you have the right people living together. So we have two properties that we currently own and manage where we have, that are, they're using some HUD grant money for permanent supportive housing. So there are homeless with mental health conditions. And if you don't have the right mix of people in there, the whole house is upset. So the shared living environment, I think, can be done, but there has to be some sort of management or some coordination needed to make that truly viable. I think a housemate might be different than trying to get too many together at the same time. What was the other, I think you had three different things.
Oh, any other opportunities that you might see for affordable housing on the horizon?
I think there can be, it can be just about anywhere. It's best to be somewhere that has the grocery stores and employment and that kind of stuff. But there's also a need that's even further out in the county, within the more rural areas. There's still people that don't make enough money there to afford the standard rents, or are living in sub-quality conditions. So, but it's also challenging then to do it and score enough money, or score enough points to be able to get the tax credits to do the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome. When you're developing new affordable housing, do you take into consideration the average family size in that area? What is your typical unit size mix look like? Is it smaller units or are there some able to accommodate families?
So we always do a market study associated with all of our application processes. We do have one property that has four-bedroom units. Other than that, we generally have two- and three-bedroom units. We, the most current project, we need to still have a funding gap due to construction costs. But that one, we have one, two, and three-bedroom units in there, hoping to get more of an intergenerational community. So we try to create a variety. We have senior apartments that have one- and two-bedroom units, so it's kind of varying. We do lack general- We do lack general occupancy one-bedrooms, which is part of why we're trying to increase some of those.
All right, I've got some questions too. I appreciate the sample budget and I understand that's a sample. What, but was that like from a real project at all? Like, were those numbers from a real project?
I blended.
You blended, okay. Because something I think about a lot, you know, developer might come forward and say, well, we can't do that because it will, they'll destroy our margins. And I feel like, at least I don't, I don't know where to necessarily find the information or be given the information to really understand what those margins are. Would it be possible for Community Basics to share some real budgets with the commission so that we could like refer to those to have an exemplar of, of actual costs associated to compare and contrast when other projects come up?
So that particular project is a combination of the last two projects I've done.
Okay.
So one project did not have, because Lancaster City and Lancaster Township have minimal municipal fees, that budget was definitely different than the other one that had municipal fees. That's pretty much the only major difference, other than big rounding.
I guess I'm more asking, I, I'm slightly confused, like, I would like to see, not necessarily just from you, but like something I, I would look forward to see from any developer is like, hey, here's the budget, here's how much, like, here's how much the architect costs, the construction costs, land development, engineer, legal, reports, tests, blah, 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 blah. Like, because I feel like sometimes not, again, not your organization, but a developer will come forward and say like, we, we just can't do that because our margins will be too low. And without those figures backed up, like, without presenting a, a budget to us, which I, I don't think is a requirement, right? Like, that makes that argument very ambiguous. And I get, I'm, I'm asking, would it be possible for Community Basics to give us some examples of projects that have been done so that we could refer to those as like against potential projects?
I would prefer not to do that, and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Each project will have a different mix of units. It will have a different mix of finishes. It will have different site work components. I mean, I, I could keep going on with all the differences that could be there, so to share one budget with you and have you compare that to something else, I don't think that's apples to apples. And then the other component is, depending on who is there, they know what is expected of them to report back to their organization. So it could be that, you know, or they only have so much funding. This is the bucket that I have to use to fund this project. So if you start creating additional wants and needs of that project, you could exceed what they actually have to spend on it.
I do understand that. And I understand that not, projects aren't apples to apples. I guess I just make that request, if possible, ever, so that there's some more background information, e- even though they're not apples to apples, to like get an internal sense of, for example, someone comes forward with a project, we would be able to have some sense of the idea of like where those margins lie, like what, like what makes it prohibitive for certain aspects to be included. But I'll, I'll move on from that specifically. I'm very curious. I saw figures like for, you know, development fee, and when I just took the, I forget what number it was, like four twenty-something, over sixteen-something million, that came out to two point five percent. Like, what, what's the relationship like for developers and organizations like yourself? And what are those fees typically, like, what, what is a typical developer fee? Is it like a percentage?
We are, and it's capped. It's a percentage and then it is also capped.
Okay.
So that particular year, we were capped at a million and a half. They had, they just increased it, this, for the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two application round, and I don't remember exactly what it is. But you have to remember, so while we earn a million and a half in developer fee, if you look on the financing page, we're reinvesting over four hundred thousand of that. So now we're only down to one point one million. That's how I get paid. And I don't get that all at once. I get a piece when I close, I get a piece when I'm fifty percent, I get a piece when I'm at a hundred percent construction completion, I get another piece when I get it fully leased. So I'm getting this over like three years.
Okay. Oh, so, so, pardon my foolishness, so the developer fee is like, Community Basics as a developer charge, okay, okay.
Right.
I'm, I'm starting to understand that a little bit more. Could you also explain, because you said tax credits and like the, the sale of such?
Right.
Could you detail that a little bit more for me? Because I, it hits my brain and I'm like, I don't under, I don't understand.
It, it's a complex thing that the IRS created for us. So the low-income housing tax credit program is a function of the IRS. They are allocated to each state and each state has a housing finance agency. In our case, it is Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. They have an annual competitive application process to get these credits. So multiple people submit projects, there's usually a hundred or so projects submitted, about a third get awarded. At that point then, the developer has tax credits to sell to someone.
Okay.
And that's how we create the limited partner equity. So generally, the buyer of those is either a bank or a financing institution or a syndicator who is going to get other investors to come in. We don't get any benefit from those tax credits, it goes to the investor.
So that it's a, sorry to interrupt you. So the low-income housing tax credit is essentially an asset that you're able to sell to get investment into the program, or the project, rather?
Not sure I would have called it an asset, but it is something I can sell to get the investor to come in. They get a tax benefit for the next ten years.
Could you explain, I think this is the part I'm trying to-
Sorry, we have limited time this evening. If you have one other burning question, perhaps we can ask that and then see if there are any other questions on the, the commission.
Okay, yeah, because my last question was actually just going to be like, could you explain how, like, like, why is that tax credit a benefit to somebody else? I, like, I, I really have a limited understanding.
They receive a reduction to their federal taxes over the next ten years.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any additional questions for members of commission?
I only have one, and it's, it's not very complicated, it's more just, how long are you required to hold the rents at a certain subsidized rate? You said at sixty percent of the AMI, or if some of those other units are, how long do you have to hold that?
As we get these tax credits, we have to agree to a restrictive covenants on the property, and we are now up to forty years. Forty years. It was. And then it was thirty-five, and now we're at forty. It is a long time and usually somewhere in there, you need to do some, some rehabilitation to the property. And then it starts it all over again. So we're in it for the long haul.
Any questions for members of the public?
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, I just have one question from the perspective of the city. Ms. Greener talked about how they do a market study before building new developments. That's not something that we require or even see a lot in the city when it's new, large-scale housing developments. Is there a way that we could require something like that if a project is over a certain number of units?
So we don't require it. I would say that it is actually very common, though. For any substantially sized project, nearly all of them are, are doing market studies of their own. Oftentimes, a developer is unwilling to share those.
Yeah.
They're proprietary, sometimes from the company who's generating them. Also, of course, it, you know, something they paid for and they don't necessarily just want to pass it out, it's a market advantage in some sense to, to have that. And ultimately, the development cost is a risk that the developer is taking on to build. And so, of course, it needs to make good financial sense for them to want to build that. The city, at least traditionally, is not in the position, most cities, municipalities in the business of determining whether it's good business for the landowner. In some cases, we'll, municipality will do a tax, tax revenue or benefit analysis to make sure that the services that we're providing to that development don't exceed the cost of the taxes that we're getting from that development. Sometimes it'll be done for very large-scale land development projects. We, we don't typically do that in, in the city, or we haven't, because a lot of our, there's not a large infrastructure outlay for a lot of the projects that we're, we're building. There's already water and sewer and other utilities on site, which is generally, you know, sometimes the biggest cost that the municipality takes on through dedication of roads and utilities that then becomes infrastructure we need to maintain. Sometimes, you know, police and fire being out of extended distance may require a new facility at some point down the line. So being a compact city that has a lot of infrastructure, we have a lot of advantages in, in that way that some of the more suburban municipalities, you know, don't.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your time, Ms. Greener. We really appreciate it. As you can imagine, this is a hot topic at these, at these meetings of the Planning Commission, from the public and from the commission members here. It's just an area of continual concern, and this body does have the ability to make recommendations for changes to the zoning code and land development code. So I'm glad to hear that our municipal fees are fairly affordable compared to a lot of others. I think partly that's a PUC issue, is that right? We don't have the same connection fees sometimes for water and sewer, but then I think also just our general land development fees are fairly low compared to some municipalities. Yeah. Thank you.
So at this time, should I adjourn the meeting before?
Yeah, I, I think so, and then we can proceed. We, we were going to do a sort of interactive exercise for the comprehensive plan this evening as part of our general business, but I think because Mr. Bame is joining by phone, we'll con, we'll conclude the meeting and then have, without a quorum present, then we'll have our land use exercise for the northeast for the comprehensive plan.
Real quick question, just because someone else had walked in, should we ask if there's any public comment? I don't know if there's any-
Certainly.
Oh, are you okay?
Sure, you're welcome.
So. At six fifty-seven PM, I will adjourn the Wednesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Lancaster City Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Bame, for calling in.
Of course.
We should, we should conclude the video and then we can move down to an informal session here.